Okay, good evening. This is regular Select Board meeting on November 26, 2018. It's a call to order. We are currently in the Callahan Room of the Dalton Town Hall. Mr. Royall, would you lead us in the --
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Britten, can I have your world call, please?
Uh, Bishop?
Here.
John Berthold?
Here.
Dehala?
Here.
John Royall?
Here.
Ken Walter?
Here.
Room from America.
Yeah. We have minutes from November 13. And before I ask for a motion, are there any corrections that need to be addressed or additions? We got the certificates for next Monday night? I'm going to announce it. Okay, any additions or corrections? Okay, could I have a motion?
Sure. I make a motion, we accept the November 13, 2018 minutes as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made, seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Or against? Abstentions? Thank you. All right. Public address to the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedure or matters may be answered by the chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Would anyone like to address the board? Yes, sir.
John Laduke, 98 Frederick Drive in Dalton?
Yes.
Has nothing to do with what's on the agenda?
You may talk about anything that has to do with the town.
Well, I live on Frederick Drive.
Yes.
Frederick Drive's a little straightaway, and then there's a bend.
Right.
I've gone to City Hall four different times, talked to them about, can they fill the pothole? Now, this was in the summertime, in the fall, in the winter, whatever. I mean, this holes, and it's right on the corner. So, as you turn the corner, you've got to go two miles an hour to try to avoid the holes. Now, if somebody, I think it could be a safety issue, aside from the fact that it's a pain to have these holes there, and the other fact is, nobody ever gets back to you. I come in, I talk to the woman downstairs in the office, she's very pleasant, and she said, "I'll contact them, and they'll let you know." No calls. Nobody ever calls back. So, when you turn the corner, the holes. So, I can picture somebody sooner or later just saying, "I'm just going to go on the other side." And if you go on the other side, it could be cars coming down, and it could be an accident. The only reason is that it's potholes, and nobody ever addresses the issue. I mean, I brought it up, the guy next door to me brings it up consistently, talking to a woman downstairs. He calls all the time. But, I mean, I've been here four times, and never going to call that. I mean, it's, you know, I would like somebody to look at it, and I know you live on the street, you know, right on, you take that street.
Hmm.
I mean--
I've got one in front of my house.
I saw that. I took a walk the other day, and I saw that one too, and I was thinking--
Okay, you just walked a little bit.
Right. And, I mean, just address it. I mean, okay? That's my concern. Thank you.
We'll have the town manager follow up on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board? Okay. So, moving on. Item six, we have appointments this evening. The Council on Aging, there's two. And I'm going to read a memorandum from our town manager, Kenneth Walter, to us, and ratification of appointments to the Council on Aging. It says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification the appointments of Robert R. Mary of 33 Ensign Street and Yvonne D. Washburn of 197 Main Street Apartment B to the Council on Aging for terms expiring on June 30, 2021, and June 30, 2020, respectively. Mr. Mary replaces Thomas Callahan, and Mrs. Washburn replaces Stuart Brooks. The recommendation of Executive Director Kelly Pezy, or Pizzy, excuse me, is enclosed for your information. Thank you for your consideration of these appointments." So, any, well, let's have a motion.
Okay.
Let's have a motion.
I make a motion, we appoint Robert R. Mary of 33 Ensign Street and Yvonne D. Washburn of 197 Main Street Apartment B to Council on Aging for terms expiring on June 30, 2021, and June 30, 2020, respectively.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made, and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we've come to the point of the meeting that we've all been waiting for.
Yes.
Our tax classification hearing for FY 2019, and we have our principal assessor with us here tonight, Laura Mafuccio, who's going to give us a presentation and guide us through this, as you have for every year that you've been here. It is kind of a confusing thing. I've been doing it for six years, and it still confuses me. So-- Laura, is there any way you would like me to preface this, or would you just like to--
If you'd like, I'll just go ahead and go over the handout that I gave you.
Okay, that would be fine.
And we have attendance on the back.
Okay.
Pretty much the same as last year. I mean, figures and numbers and everything have changed.
Yeah, yeah.
But, the purpose of the classification hearing is to consider a residential factor, whether we're keeping the tax rate at a single rate or, you know, splitting. The other is the consideration of a residential exemption, and then a small commercial exemption. And these get very involved, and as I've told you in the past, it's really something that has to be, you know, considered well before the hearing, only because there is so much involved in instituting those. The town of Dalton has historically adopted a residential factor of one, which is the single tax rate. So, everything, commercial, industrial, personal property, and residential, all at the same rate. You are allowed, the town is allowed to shift the burden within set parameters. Commercial, industrial, and personal property can be increased as much as 50%, as long as the residential still bears 65% of what they did in the past.
So, 65% of our tax base--
65% of what would have been raised without the shift in--
Okay.
Right. Shifting the tax burden does not increase the revenue, it merely shifts the burden over to the commercial and industrial. The reasons for, the things to consider before thinking of a shift is the fact that the town's industrial and personal property classes are only 15% of our full base. There should be at least 20% to 25% commercial base before considering a split rate. Only 115 communities out of 353 in Massachusetts have a split tax rate. Only six in Berkshire County out of 32. These communities typically have about 22% to 25% commercial base.
Do you know offhand these communities?
I--
Would it be Pittsfield? Pittsfield, North Adams?
I do. I don't know if I put it in this file, but Pittsfield, North Adams--
Adams.
I do have a list in my office. I'm not sure if I actually put it in my folder here. Let me take a--
My next goes.
I think I clipped it up on my board. No, I'm sorry, I don't have it right there on me.
But, it's based on the amount of commercial--
It's, yes. Yeah. It doesn't make sense. What happens when you shift it, you put the burden on the commercial, industrial, and personal property, and because there's so few, the residential doesn't really see a significant difference. And what I did was exhibit, if you look at Exhibit A on the back, and this is based on 18, because at the time that I prepared these scenarios, you didn't, we didn't have the other in line yet. So, for example, if you, if our tax rate, you know, 1991 was our tax rate for fiscal 18, and a single rate, it would be across the board. If you increased it by 5%, yeah, by 5%, you would have a $22-- it would go, it would-- I'm sorry, I'm looking at Exhibit B. I apologize. Let's go back to the shift here. So, if you went up 5%, you'd have, you'd go down to 1973 on the residential and $20.91 on the commercial end. And then, the highest you could do it is 1.5%. And the residential would be reduced to $18.10, and the commercial would go up to $29.86. So--
Can everybody see that? The column's way over to the right, there's RES, ET, that's the change in residential rates, and COMN, ET is the change in commercial rates.
With the example--
As you go off, and you can see the CIP shift starts at 1, all the way over to the left, the first column, goes from 1 all the way up to 1.5, 1.5.
So, if you're looking, if you're looking at roughly, looking at the 10% increase, or shift, I should say--
Right. The residential--
You're looking at 38, or, let's say, let's round it off, 40 cents on the thousand, which translates to an average home of $204,000, somewhere in the neighborhood of, what? Eight bucks? Not even eight, not even 80 bucks, no. It's not that much.
No, you said about 40, right. It'd be under 80.
Yeah. And you've decreased it. You've decreased the rate for residents. Residents is by about 40 cents, but you've upped it for a commercial by about a buck.
Right, right.
So, you can see that what happens there.
And that not only, it also goes to, commercial is chapter land, which is agricultural preservation, forest, and where they get a significant discount on their taxes. It would also raise their rate, and then it would eliminate some of that. It would, you know, put it back up a little bit. And then, personal property would be the same. It would go up.
But, we don't have, when I was reading through this, you were just talking about the open space property?
We don't have any--
We don't have any, right.
No, this is the chapter. We have Chapter 61A. Chapter 61 is forest, Chapter 61A is agriculture, and Chapter 61B is recreational. And these are properties that, well, the forests, they have to go through the, through the state to get a forest plan and manage the property appropriately. By doing that, they get a significant discount on the taxes. Their tax, their tax dollars is considerably lower. Same with agriculture, not as much. And then, recreation, not as much. But, it's a state-based program that gives the different percentages every year, so.
Okay.
They classify, they have to apply every year and provide information every year. Any other questions? And then, small businesses as well as large, personal property, and with the tax rate, it would be split. And then, the Chapter 61, which I just discussed.
John, I just got one question.
Go right ahead.
Pardon me?
Just done. I have one question. You said historically, we've adopted a factor of one.
Yes.
How many years is historically? Is that like--
I don't know that--
I think it's like 38 years in a row.
I don't know, but I certainly not in quite some time.
Figure it out.
I don't even know if it was ever split rate.
Never was. It's been a factor of one since day one, that we started doing this.
This went into effect in 1978, and spent about 40 years.
Yeah. So, like 38 years, 38 years in a row, we've adapted a factor of one. Thank you for the historical perspective.
And as I said, that Dalton does not have any designated open space classification. The residential exemption, historically, Dalton has not adopted it. We have a very small percentage of vacation homes. If we had more in the communities that do have second homes, and a great deal, because the burden then shifts to non-occupied homes and vaca, you know, second homes. It could be up to 20%. It would raise the residential tax rate across the board to all residential properties before the exemption. And since the shift is only within that class, the second homes, higher-valued homes, and residential rental properties would pay for the exemption to the lower-valued homes. And the exemption would only benefit owner-occupied residential properties with a value of less than $232,000. The burden would shift to the owner-occupied residents, the high-valued ones, and the non-owner-occupied, which are, the non-owner-occupied, single residents, there's only 6.5% of those. 50% of condominiums are non-owner-occupied, and 79% are multi-adaptments. And it should only be considered when a community has a large percentage of vacation homes. In addition, this would be something that has to be started the year before, basically. You've got to do, you've got to do some research and inspections and so forth. And the small commercial exemption, the town historically has not adopted a small commercial exemption. It allows for up to 10% of the value of commercial parcels to be exempt from taxation if the business had no more than 10 employees, and we do get a list from the state, confidential list, occupied the commercial property as of January 1, and that the valuation of the parcel was under $1 million. A business which is one of several businesses within a commercial building, all businesses would have to be eligible in order for them to qualify. The benefit is to the commercial property owner, not the business itself. And similar to the residential exemption, the levy does not change, and the exemption is borne within the commercial class, resulting in an overall increase in commercial and industrial. Considerations before adopting a small commercial exemption, the town, the town may have 19 or fewer properties that may qualify and be eligible for the exemption. Of the 102 that were on the list from the state, approximately the 19 are in a building under $1 million. Approximately seven are small businesses occupying a mixed-use parcel. Approximately 57 are small businesses operating out of their home. So, that's not a commercial exemption. Approximately nine are in large commercial buildings wherein all businesses would have to qualify. And approximately four occupy a building in excess of the million. The three are not located in Dalton on their list, and one or more are out of business.
So, when it all boils down, I'm lost in the figures here.
Okay.
When it all boils down to, how many small businesses would be eligible?
Well, 19 is what I've eliminated it to at this point, just by doing some rough research.
Yeah.
19 may. But, we still would have to inspect the properties, make sure that if they're in a larger building with other businesses, that all the businesses in that building qualify, because it's not the business who's benefiting--
It's the property owner.
It's the property owner. So, even though you're trying to help the small business--
I guess that's what I was trying to get at, is what actual businesses would benefit from this, or would just--
Yeah. That's as much as I could narrow it without inspections and doing all the legwork that would need to be done in preparation for such an exemption. Because 57 alone are out of houses, you know?
Yeah.
And it wouldn't, you know, wouldn't qualify. Some are in mixed-use buildings, so you'd have to take that portion that's commercial, and then, make sure that they all qualify within that commercial portion. So, it would be, boy, prorated, it's quite involved. So, any more questions before I get to the conclusion of this?
Anything else?
So, again, the town, there's three things you've got to vote on tonight, and that's a residential factor, whether or not to grant a residential exemption, and whether or not to grant a small commercial exemption. The town is, we've been through that, has historically adopted residential factor of And, again, historically has not granted a residential exemption, and has not granted a small commercial exemption in the past.
So, aside from voting on a residential, a residential factor of one, or a factor of one for the tax rate, what are the other things we have to vote on?
You have to vote not to adopt a residential exemption, and vote not to adopt a commercial exemption.
Okay. Is there a particular order which we need to do that in?
Is there a particular order? Um, no.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we don't put the cart before the horse, after all.
I don't think there's any order that you have to do that.
Okay, all right. Okay. Well, I'll open it up. This is a hearing, and in fact, if anyone in the audience has a question, by all means, you may ask it. And that obviously goes for the board. This is an open hearing, and this. So, I'll open it up to any questions that we haven't already asked?
Oh, good. I think what we have now is working.
Yeah.
And it has certain blessings, too.
I, yeah, I feel that, given the type of town that we have, it's the only option that is viable for us. I do have some questions after this, which really doesn't pertain to what we're going to vote on, but don't go away until--
I won't go.
Okay. All right. So, are you straight on what your motions are going to be?
I'll do the factor of one.
Okay.
You want me to repeat?
And then, there'll be a vote, a motion to not--
Adopt.
Adopt a residential exemption, and not to adopt a commercial exemption.
Correct. And to vote on residential factor of one, which is a single tax--
The way you want.
Whatever way you give it to--
Okay. I make a motion, we adopt a factor of one for tax rate for 2019.
Residential.
Residential tax rate.
Residential tax rate.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thanks.
I make a motion, we do not adopt a residential exemption.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Lastly?
Okay. I make a motion, we do not adopt a commercial exemption.
I'll second that.
The motion's been made, and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Now, Debbie has put you all into the Gateway system--
Yes.
And you will need to sign. I can have you sign the hard copy as well. They no longer accept that as a loaded document. You need to go on, each of you individually, through your own password, need to go in and sign.
Is there a timeframe on that, Laura?
If you could do it within the next day or two. You know, we want to get the tax rates set. All of our, you know, most of our figures are in. We want to get the recap, and then, get our tax rates set, and we get the tax.
So, what's important is that we do this online immediately?
Yes, like tomorrow morning, or--
Sometime during the day tomorrow?
Or sometime during--
Clerk's office.
Or can I do it when I leave the meeting tonight?
You can do it when you leave the meeting tonight, if you know. I mean, I don't know how long the meeting's going to last, but I can stay for a little bit and get you in there, but--
I think, I think we're pretty much set of being in there.
You know how to do that.
I'm on myself, and I was going to just go over things with the board again.
Okay.
I know that they have been in touch with Deb--
Yeah.
About this as well, so that we are online, and I would imagine it's pretty simple to go in and sign off on this, once you have your login and password.
Well, you know, you have to know what to go into when you're going into the LA5.
Okay.
I think you need someone to at least walk you through it the first time around, because you're going to go into the LA, you open up Gateway.
Yes.
You get in with your login, and each of you have to close down, you know, get in on your own.
Right.
Because that brings up your signature line. You go in, you have to choose tax rate--
Right.
Which is on the upper bar, and then, you've got to choose the LA5 on the sidebar.
There's only one option at the top.
And there is a spot for you to sign. I mean, it's down where it says Select Board, or Mayor, or--
There's only one option on that upper bar, and it's tax rate.
Okay.
I noticed tonight.
Okay.
Now, I didn't click on it.
See, you're limited access.
So, I haven't, I haven't clicked on it yet.
Okay.
So, once you click on that, it brings you to another screen, correct?
Well, it brings you, yeah, to the main screen, and then, the LA5 is what you're looking for. You may not have a whole lot of choices, because you're limited to what you need to sign or go into, so I'm not sure what your screen is going to look like.
So, it's LA5?
It's an LA5. I'll show you. I'm going to, I'll have you sign the hard copy so that you know what it is. I've got the same signature lines like I had last year, it's just two. Yeah, here's the ad. Okay, this tells the, oh, the evaluations went up this year, so the tax rate will be going down a 10. Okay.
But, they don't accept this, then?
No, not anymore. Last year, they gave me a hard time, and they said, "No more." After this, you need to each go in, but I'll have you sign this, that you voted on it tonight, and then, but it is the LA5. And there was a spot for Deb to sign, for myself to sign, and then, down the bottom, for your signatures. So, make sure you go into the right, you're not signing for somebody else. The assessors or the clerk. And your name will come up, because it's your login. And all you do is click a box, and, I think you just sign it, don't, yeah, don't submit it, yeah. We got, it's Debbie and I have to say. Do not submit, only sign.
Will we get in, somebody will help us here?
Yes, yes. And whether it's Debbie's office, our office.
Can we try it on our own?
You can try it.
Okay.
Don't submit.
Okay, so, wait a second. What do you mean, "don't submit"?
Well, submit is actually sending it to DOR, but it will be lacking Debbie's signature and my signature.
Okay, so, just don't hit the submit button, just get out.
No, you can sign and save.
Sign and save.
Sign and save.
Gotcha. I spoke to Debbie today, she was very helpful.
Yeah.
Very helpful, yeah. I will probably speak to her again tomorrow.
Yeah.
When I actually do it.
Okay.
I would just say that, everyone always says the computer's going to make-- I would just say that everyone always says the computer's going to make it easier, but signing my name had been easier than that.
That's right, that's right.
I did notice that once you go in and create your new password and everything else, because they gave us a password to go in, you have to log out, and then go back in again before you get that screen that says tax rate to click on. So that's one thing that's a little confusing. But we'll get through it.
Okay, I'm sure you will.
We always do it.
All right, and you had other questions for me, too?
Do you need five signatures?
Just wait.
Those were the questions, who I had.
Although, those were the questions.
Do you need all five signatures? I was just, I'm going to sign it, but I just, in case somebody is not able to sign it for some reason.
You know, Mark wasn't here to vote, so maybe not, but you four should, yes.
No, I mean, somebody else would get sick. I'm just saying, if something goes wrong, I was hoping that, you know, you'll be getting the majority of it.
You probably could get away with it.
You wouldn't have to hold it up.
I don't know.
Okay.
Because you all voted on it, I don't know if you all have to sign it at some point.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody could help you from home if you were sick. Go on your own computer and get in there, maybe, I don't know.
Oh, I was going to use my own computer, yeah, you do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for more?
Anything else for me? Okay, you didn't need me after this, though.
All set, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our tax classification hearing is now closed. We have a, the next item is creation of a stipend position at the Senior Center, and this has to do with the meals program, and I'm going to read a letter from the COA Director, Kelly Fizzi, and then I'll turn it over to Ken for a bit of an explanation on this. And this letter is to Ken Walto, and to me, and to the rest of the Select Board members. Says, "The Dalton Council on Aging would like an audience for the Dalton Select Board for the purpose of creating, or of creation of a stipend position at the Senior Center. The Dalton Senior Center hosts two congregant meals per week, prepared and delivered by Elder Services. These meals require supervision and training of volunteers, oversight of safe food handling practices, ordering, documenting attendance, and handling cash donations on behalf of Elder Services. In addition, Elder Services holds monthly meetings for the meals site director and additional trainings. The actual work time is normally five hours per week. This position, formally funded by Elder Services, is no longer funded, who requires, is no longer funded, who requires the hosting agency to find a suitable person to fill this position. We have had people expressing an interest in the position. However, when they learn it is a volunteer position, they continue looking for paid, part-time work to supplement their income. As a result, the responsibility falls on staff, usually Doran or I, to fill in during lapses. I have attached Elder Services nutrition programs requirements for this position, and their supporting documentation. This document was used to create the job description. Sincerely, Kelly Fizzi, Dalton Council on Aging and Senior Center Director." So, I'm going to give it to you, Ken.
This letter really explains very well what's going on, and after my brief explanation, trying to answer any questions, I'm going to ask you to hold this over to the next meeting, because I've asked Kelly to produce a detailed job description like we normally have for our jobs, if you're interested in going forward with this, and also a recommendation for a stipend. Now, the stipend will come out of the form of the grant we receive from the state. But this has caused some real stress across the county, and Kelly's doing the research now about what other councils and aging are doing. I understand that Williamstown canceled their meal programs. And Pittsville has a full-time position, but it's incorporated with other duties and activities. I think somebody runs a cafe and so forth. But it's become quite a problem, and I feel it's a good use of the state grant, if the state will allocate some of the funds to that, and I understand that they will. It's one of the positions that they'll allow the state grant to be used for.
Ken, this won't require a top meeting action?
No, I think it would really require your actions to use the grant funds in that way, and of course, approval of Elder Services.
I do know that, seeing it firsthand, it is very involved for that person directing the activities of these meals twice a week, which are Monday and Thursday. So I can see where it would be good to make a stipend position at this time. But you say this is going to, we're going to have to wait until the 10th to make a final decision on this?
Yeah, I wanted, I advised Kelly that I thought you should have not only a full job description, but also an idea of what the stipend would be. So we're doing a little back, Kelly's been doing some background research, and we have to look at the stipends we pay now, and try to bring those together to what is a reasonable stipend for the position.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Walto? Okay.
Motion to table?
No, we don't have to make any motion on this. We can just make it for the next agenda.
Hold it over for the next agenda. Final discussion.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a donation in memory of Ernie Lawrence Harris III to the library, and I'll let you make a motion about that.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept a donation of seventy-five dollars in memory of Ernest Ernie Lawrence Harris III to the Dalton Library.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. The next is a grant exception, not exception, acceptance. It's an annual grant that we do receive from Catherine LW and Winthorpe Murray Crane III Charitable Foundation, and it's in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. So I will entertain a motion about it whenever you're ready.
Okay, I make the motion, we accept the twenty-five hundred dollars from Catherine LW and Winthorpe Amcrane III Charitable Foundation to be used for the purchase of Lego Creator and Technatic products and robot materials for the Dalton Library.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, next is a, it's more or less a thank you from the Cachets for the Troops in regard to their fundraising run on August 26, 2018. And I will read the letter. It's addressed to me, it says, "Dear Mr. Bartels, On behalf of the Cachets for the Troops, we thank you, the Dalton Select Board and the Dalton residents, for their support for our fourth annual run for the Troops on August 26, 2018. With your generous help, this successful event raised funds for the Home Base Program. The Home Base Program, a partnership between the Red Sox Foundation and Massachusetts General Hospital, provide help to veterans and their families, and their, help to veterans and their families heal from the invisible wounds of war through clinical care, wellness-based programs, community outreach, education, and research. One of the three returning veterans, one of three returning veterans suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, and/or traumatic brain injury, TBI. Your support is crucial to opening many opportunities for these veterans and their families. We are grateful and thankful to the Select Board and the Dalton residents for supporting our mission of educating the community and continuing the ongoing mission of healing. We hope you join us next year. Sincerely, Missy Cardison."
That's nice.
Yes, that's very nice. It's a great event, it's well-run, and I can't thank the Cachets for doing what they do. I know it's a lot of work, and it has paid off well over the past four years, and thank you very much for what you do to make this a success. And I'll just open it up for comments. There's nothing we have to vote on on this, but if people would like to comment on it, that would be fun.
I'd just like to echo what you said, John. They do a great job on this, it's a great fundraiser for a great organization, and it's really appreciated.
Any other comments?
Mr. Jerry, I just could point out that, and Jerry, help me out here. Cachet family also runs an annual breakfast.
Yes.
Firehouse, which is grown by leaves and boughs every year, and is a tremendous fundraiser, and a tremendous amount of work. Jerry, was that usually in April?
Yeah.
It's springtime. Anyway, it's a very community-oriented event, and a great opportunity for the families to get out there on a Sunday morning.
I enjoy it.
Yeah.
It's always a good time.
Yeah, I want it.
It's always a good time. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we're going to open it as the Licensing Board in regard to renewal of a variety of license, liquor licenses, or I should say alcoholic commons, victualer, entertainment, games, games machine, jukebox, class-two auto licenses. And before you, I'm just going to read this quick memo from our administrative assistant, Judy Wagner, and it says, "Please review the enclosed rosters for 2019 license renewals contingent on receipt of payment and application. Licenses are ready for Select Board signatures in the Select Board office and need to be ready to distribute by December 17, 2018." So after we get done with this, it's imperative we all get in there and sign the licenses when you have time. There is a note that there are new licenses. One is for Zips, is applying for a new entertainment license, and Stacy's Corner Cafe for a common, a new common victualer license. Berkshire Organics, as the last note, has to do a transfer of license. They sold the business, but the new owners never did a transfer. They cannot sell any alcohol right now until the transfer is done. So with those stipulations or amendments, you have before you the list of licenses for us to be voted on, and when we do the motions, let's take each category separately, and I'm going to hand this over to John to make what motions are needed.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. You mentioned something, it caught my eye. Stacy's Corner Cafe?
Yes.
They're doing what?
They are applying for a new common victualer license. So we're not voting on that, they're just applying for, I want to add, they're not, this is not for our vote tonight, the application of it. This is only for renewals?
Right, I understand that, I just don't understand what they're doing.
What they do, it's a little breakfast shop.
Yeah, but why do they need a new common victualer's license?
Somehow, it was missed when they opened up, so they need to get a common victualer's license.
Oh, okay. They don't have one now.
They don't have one now.
They're just, oh, common victualer's license, nothing to do with alcohol.
No, no.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, Ken, I appreciate it. All right, back to the business at hand. Okay, let me start with the page, the big page of all the 2018 liquor licenses, and I make a motion that all these licenses on this page, or pages, be authorized for renewal. Remember? Also, there's a page down the back, also game machines, they're all renewals, jukeboxes are renewals, and...
Well, why don't we do, why don't we do just some liquor licenses, and then we'll go into those actual categories after.
Yeah, I didn't know it was all on one page. All right. The motion was to approve renewal of all annual renewals that are stated on this liquor license list.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Now, these are only renewals for people who have paid to date, who have complied with the request of sending in their applications and payment. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
One abstention, motion passes.
All right, on the same sheet of papers, the second category is entertainment license for 2019, lists all the names, all the names and all the payments, total of nine hundred dollars for nine applicants.
Oh, all right. That's okay, we can do the entertainment and go back to the other door, is that the, you're talking about the common victualer?
No, I was on the entertainment page.
Right, okay.
But down here is a quite, a question that came up. On the bottom line, Wilkinson Enterprises doing business as Zippies. He doesn't currently have an entertainment license. So we really cannot renew something that doesn't exist.
Exactly.
He came in the other day and applied for one. There is an application in the hopper, which will require action by this board at some point in time.
Right.
So, the list I'm going to move to approve has got to be limited to the first eight organizations.
Okay, or with the exception of, all the organizations listed, with the exception of Wilkinson Enterprises?
Right.
That's what you're talking about?
Yep.
EDA Zips.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I don't.
All right, now we got the next page.
One abstention.
It's on the last page, too. Yeah, it's just license again.
Do you want to do the common victualer?
No, I was going to do, mine are all together.
Game machines?
Game machines and jukeboxes.
Okay.
I moved that the enclosed list for game machines and jukeboxes be approved by this board for 2019.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so moved. Next. Now, you did, which, okay.
You did all the liquor licenses, you didn't do a common victualer.
You did the game machines.
Yep. I didn't see this common victualer.
And there's a separate one for jukeboxes.
We just did those.
We did those together, what we're doing, okay.
Go back to the second page, major sheet, it's the common victual license, which is the common license you have to have to operate and sell food and/or alcoholic beverages on your premises.
Okay.
I moved that the following list, quick check here, be approved for 2019.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? I have one thing I just want to note, is that we're not approving anything for Stacy's Corner Cafe. One, it has not been paid, four, it's an application for a new license.
And you know it's on this list, Jerry.
It's on the, it's the very last one, John. I just, we wouldn't be approving it anyways.
Two pages of this?
Yeah, there's two pages of this.
All right, I didn't know it.
Yeah, see on the very bottom there, and that, for two reasons. One, nothing has been paid, and two, we haven't approved it initially, so.
Quick question, Ken. If they could have been one of, common victualer for 2019, does this board have to take any action on it, or simply can your office issue it?
You know what, I don't know, John. I would assume, based on the fact that you're approving these for next year, that you have to approve them as a license. Although, it's common practice, we usually have done it a whole Although it's, in common practice, we've usually done it a whole month.
Now, if you see these people, if you ask them if they can get their application in by the December 10th meeting?
Right.
And that'll be effective.
Yeah, that's going to.
The only problem, it'll be effective July 1st.
Okay. Any further discussion on the common victualer?
All right, one more category, one page.
Oh, wait a second. I have, we haven't voted on it yet. We haven't voted on it yet. Any further discussion on, on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention.
Okay, and the last page, 2019, last two auto licenses. I move that the following licenses be approved for 2019. Paul R. Humphrey, DBA Dalton Motors, 349 North Street, and Dalton Auto Express, 110 East Ustodani Street.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay.
You know that.
Yes.
I left the middle one out for obvious reasons.
Right, the town sales and service on Ustodani Street, there are no forms that have been received nor payment that have been received. So it isn't being renewed. So, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I think that's it, Ken, I overlook something.
I believe it is. I believe that's all it is. Okay, so we've got to close this licensing board. And we will go on to Dalton Community Cable Franchise Third Quarter Fee. And I have a letter here from John Ostrich with regard to that. It says, Dear Chairman Bartels, please consider this a formal request to transfer the franchise fee of $28,682.39 recently received from Charter Communication to the Dalton Community Cable Association. It is our understanding that this is the fee for July, August, September 2018. Thank you for your attention to this matter and your continued support of DCCA. Sincerely, John Ostrich, President. Yeah, I'll take that.
Okay, I make a motion. We transfer the fee of $28,682.39 from Charter Communication to the Dalton Community Cable Association for July, August, and September 2018.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made. Second, is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Now, in regard to this, to this matter, there's a, there's an article, and I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read it, that John dropped off that's in our box with regard to community TV stations and a proposed FCC rule that could do away with the funding that we just had approved to DCCA. And it's, it's kind of disturbing because it could just do away with our cable coverage to our regular meetings, to town meetings, to town events. I don't know where it stands right now. Do you have any?
We have to see what the fees are going to be, what, we haven't heard from the FCC yet as to what those fees are going to be. They're going to look for us to pay for, to be on the channel.
Wow.
So I, I don't have any details.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like there were any details from the, from the article, but it's just one of these, kind of a heads up type of thing that it could take place and we could see a drastic cutback, if not loss, of our community cable station in the not-so-distant future.
It's very possible, yes.
So if you have a chance, this is the article. It's in our box. Give it a read and it's, I mean, Pittsfield, Pittsfield, North Adams. Where's the other town?
Lee.
Lee.
Williamstown.
In Williamstown, greatly affected. And of course us. Okay, Wakona School Building Committee and CBRC School Committee. As for the school committee, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. So I could not get a answer on your question with regard to capital projects or like a five-year.
Yeah, five-year and ten-year plan.
Yeah, plan at this point in time. That will be something I will be getting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I haven't forgotten you, so. But with the, Wakona School Building Committee, as it stands right now, and I already said that the initial schematic plan was approved. It still has to go through a process of a final plan and cost. I made mention of that last meeting. The site plan, which is the location of where the school's going to, the proposed new school is going to go, is still the same, which is basically the parking lot as it is now and the baseball field where it is now, okay, in that corner there. You know, they talked, a lot of the talk in regard to the building centered around energy conservation, net zero possibility, a net zero building possibility, that's still way up in the air. And the architects are looking into that. As for costs, nothing has been determined at this point in time. The only thing that has been determined is that we're going to build, or that the school is intending on building to a lead silver level of, of energy efficiency for the building. And if they can do more, they will do more. But right now, at, at this point in time, the, the subject of making the building a net zero building is, is still up in the air. And that, nothing has been concluded with that. There has been, there, we were given a, a schedule. And I'll read it off to you so people know what's going on. And I'll leave this in our box for people to, well, actually, I probably should give it to Breddning for our folders. November 15th of this year, we're going to have an architectural review.
November 15th?
Oh, we've already had that. I'm sorry. Back it up a little bit. Thank you, Ed. November 29th is a working group meeting. A site and land design, civil engineering, MEP and FP systems design follow-up. And also with regard to security, first responders, schools, state police, and so on, on the 29th with a working group meeting. Do you know about that, Chief?
I do know.
You do know? Okay. There you go. Yeah, you know, if you want more information on it, you can contact the superintendent on that, or Sean Armikos, or Tom Callahan, or Chair of our, of our School Building Committee. They can give you more information. December 13th is our working group meeting, next working group meeting and building committee meeting. Again, we're going to go over technology and security, architectural design update, materials, and structural systems. The 3rd of January is just another working group follow-up meeting on those subjects that I just gave you. January 10th, 2018, we'll submit a cost estimate, drawings and narratives to the, to the, to that effect. January 17th, again, there's another working group meeting. February 1 through the 4th, cost estimation, estimations will be reconciled. February 14th is when the school committee and the working group will, that should be 2019. February 14th will be taking a vote on the design and the costs for approval. Those will later be submitted to MSBA on February 20th. March 13th through the 20th, the MSBA will be having a meeting on that with regard to that. April 6th, looks like that April 6th will be the district vote on the school, whether the district will approve building the new school with its design and cost. And then April 10th, MSBA would be giving its final approval on the project. So in a nutshell, that's what's going on. There are also going to be community events prior to the vote on April 6th. There'll be one on.
Sherry, very good.
Yes. Yes, I believe so, John. March 5th, the community meetings will be 5:30 to 6:30 at Wakona, followed by 7:00 to 8:30 at Windsor Town Hall. Snow day will be the 19th of March. March 7th, there'll be another meeting, 5:00 to 6:30 at Kittrick School, followed by a 7:00 to 8:30 meeting at Beckett Elementary School. The snow date for those two meetings would be the 21st of March. And as I said, the next working group meeting is November 29th. The next building committee meeting is December 13th, both at Wakona. The, the building committee meetings start at 3:00 PM and the building committee, the working group starts at 3:00 PM and the building committee meetings start at 4:30. So with that, any questions?
Yeah, I have one question. You mentioned the parking lot and some of the playing fields being obliterated because of the new construction.
The one, the one field that will be taken away would be the baseball field.
And if I understand this process correctly, that these costs are not part of the building reconstruction, the replacement cost for these.
Not the total cost, not the total cost.
So as the committee and its wisdom developed any figures, ballpark figures for what it's going to cost to replace the playing fields and the parking lot?
That hasn't been, that hasn't been determined 100% what it's going to cost. And I can't give you a figure right now.
No, I'm not asking for one. I'm just, at some point in time, will they bring these, have these figures, even if they're only ballpark, and bring them forward?
Yes.
And that will be cost and made public that those will be costs that will be incurred in addition to the assessment for the building construction.
Right, okay. The, the total cost, there's a total project cost.
Total project, that includes?
That's a total project. That includes the building of the parking lots, the building of the fields, new fields, everything. I mean, everything, soup to nuts.
Total project. Now, it'd be confused with the construction cost for the building.
That, of that total project cost, a certain percentage is reimbursed by MSBA.
Right.
So what that actual percentage will turn out to be, depending on what needs to be done, what's decided to be done, is kind of a variable. It could be anywhere from, right now, they're figuring anywhere from 42% of that total cost to maybe 45 or 46% of that total cost.
The total project cost?
Yes.
Not the construction cost for the new building?
Well, that's part of it. The construction cost is the total project cost. You take the construction, and then you take the construction costs, and then you take the cost for rebuilding fields, making parking lots, furniture, whatever, you know, that's, that's, that's the total project cost.
So then that percentage will apply to the total project cost?
Yes, yeah. Because they, they itemize what can be and how much can be reimbursed for certain aspects of the total project.
Do you think those figures will be available before the vote on April 6th?
Oh, yeah, they'll be available in last week of January, first week of February.
That's good.
Well, that's soon.
Yeah, that's, that's just around the corner.
Wow. And he's important that for transparency's sake, that we get all this information out as soon as we can so the public and voters can digest it.
Yes, it is. And that, that will be the process between that February, I believe it was 14th day, when the approvals are made through school committee and building committee, and then afterwards the MSBA. And from that point until the April 6th vote is when it will all be, you know, really given to the, to the district, the people in the district. That's when they're going to have these community events or these community meetings. That's when we will discuss it here in a select board meeting, and I'm sure other towns will be discussing it at their select board meetings. And I, and I'm sure there's going to be additional meetings or events that will be planned during that six-week period.
Public forums.
Yes, exactly. And we may want to, we may want to consider something over and above what the school's doing too. It may be wise to hear from, hear from our constituents what, what they have to say. So there's, there's a lot to be done in a short period of time. April 6th is just around the corner, so let me think about it. Any other questions? Okay. Which brings us to the town manager updates.
Okay, really only have one for you to remind you that all the equipment is in for adult exercise, outdoor exercise park, senior center. There's a dedication this Friday at 10:00 AM to which you are all cordially invited. I also want to tell you that Kelly has done a fantastic job because she secured another roughly $5,000 grant for more equipment from the Berkshire County Community Foundation. We'll have that grant acceptance at the next meeting.
That's great.
That equipment won't be put in until the spring.
Of course. But we had to get this equipment in by the end of the month for the first grant.
By the end of the year. Yeah, Highway Department did a fantastic job getting it in there. My compliments.
Yeah, that dedication's at 10:00 AM. I don't know if you, you would say that, but it is 10:00 AM Friday at the senior center.
Bring your common workout clothes.
I'm not. I'll be there, but I won't be in my workout clothes. Anything else, Ken, for updates?
Unless anybody has a question. When the brick's going to fly at the Junior High, very old, don't I? It's been slowed up a little bit because you may recall it was a gym, subterranean gym in the old wing of the building. And it had some water. They uncovered all that. It has water in it. It's going through some testing to make sure there are no hazardous materials in the water that'll be pumped, and then we'll start to tear it down.
What are you going to be pumped to?
Out of here.
No, don't ask.
Well, we all know. We don't know yet.
Well, I was sure that this company, they, now, as for the materials, they're shipping it to their place in New York, aren't they?
Right.
So I would imagine that whatever is taken out of their water.
My guess is it'll be filtered out. If there's something in it, it'd be filtered and then just discharged normally.
That'll be interesting. Okay, all right. Anything else for Ken? Any questions? You know, the, the lights, the streetlights, how's that going?
It's still on pace to be done in, in December.
Okay, so we're still on?
Yeah, we've closed all the lights. Of course, we've closed with, we made the payment to Eversource for the streetlights. We are now the proud owners of 727 Cobra head lights and, and associated decorative lights in the suburban neighborhoods.
The old lights go back to Eversource, right?
No, they're ours. We're taking them.
The old lights are ours?
Yeah, it's be part of the install. The install will take them out.
Oh, they're, they're going to dispose them?
All of the new Cobra heads are at the highway garage at this very minute.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so we're just waiting for the installer to come and put the lights in and they're staging it.
Good. Okay. So items for future agendas. So items for future agendas. Is there any update with the short-term home rentals, Ed, at all?
There's sort of regulations already that might cover a lot. The feeling is that if neighbors are having trouble, they should contact the town hall because there are different departments that would handle them. You know, if it was noise, it would be the police. If the people are parking in the wrong places, that would also be the police. But, so that, they, right now, the planning board feels that we are somewhat covered. It isn't all the regulation, I had preferred that they, you know, put it all together in a more central place, but right now, that isn't really what seems to be happening at the planning board. But I'll say something positive about the planning board, they have agreed to pursue where we are with the master plan, and they will be contacting the other committees to see how they're doing on the items that they're supposed to be working on, and specifically the ones, any tasks that should be done in the first three years or at least discussed that's worthwhile. So we will be doing that.
Okay. Should we keep it on the list?
I was gonna probably bring it up again in a few months, but you could, I think what's gonna happen, see, it isn't much of an issue right now when it's cold.
Spring?
Spring, when it starts, we may get more complaints and get complaints when people start to show up.
I'll, I'll put down that, you know, as for spring.
That'd be good, thank you.
Ken, the sewer user billing? I know I've had it on here, and you know, it's been on here for too long a period of time because now I've kind of forgot what it was. It was a, I thought it had to do something with-
Yeah.
Like apartments or how, how, how these homes that have like a mother-in-law's apartment or something like that are built, correct?
Right, right. And this is, this is a deeper issue, too, that we really need to take a look at, is the allocation between residences and businesses of the sewer user fee. Businesses get charged a meter rate.
Yeah.
Just looking at it in a very cursory manner, it looks like we may be under assessing business and over assessing homeowners, but it goes back a very long way. Every time we update the rate, we merely update it by a percentage amount, and we've never looked at how that is actually divided. That would take a study by a consultant to look more deeply at it.
When's a, when is an approximate time that we could review this, so I can just put it down here as for, is this something that is really long-range?
That would be more, that would be more long-range and probably put in the budget for the next fiscal years, maybe like a capital improvement appropriation, the engineering study to take a look at that. But the other piece, let me speak with Laura about it, see if she'll be ready to talk about that again.
Okay, I don't know which way the, whose house is going, I just have to catch up with George And we're doing the agricultural plan on the APR property for the spring. The White House on Gulf Road, as for its disposition?
Yeah.
Can we target, target that sometime the first quarter?
We'll try.
Okay.
If it's in more like late spring, we'll try.
The elevator for town hall, capital project, that is something that we'll see if we can do for FY9, FY20, right?
Yeah, we'll look at it for the capital budget.
I just wanna make these notations here. I know Mark isn't here to, to give us any input on this, but the, the recognition of volunteers and give Kittredge awards, how did you wanna think of handling that, or?
Yeah, let Mark and I chew this out a little bit and we'll get back to you on that one because we have, we have some ideas on, like, we wanna recognize the girl of the year and boy of the year and the volunteer of the year to give Kittredge awards.
When is give Kittredge awards?
That's usually in the springtime, I do believe.
I don't remember, yeah.
I think it's the springtime. If not.
Okay. Well, let's, we, we need to know what to do prior to that, so-
Just like present a certificate of appreciation from the select board or recognition.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put down a, a date, an end date for you to report on it, our ideas by February.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Okay, the removal of the underground storage tanks northbound, what should we do?
Clock's, clock's ticking, I gotta stick my nose under the hood.
Okay.
Talk to DEP, that's all.
Can we have something for the 10th, do you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's drive down there and talk to them, just get this thing moving.
I believe we have to also notify the fire chief when that's gonna happen.
Probably, but we're not, what I intend to do is ask the DEP to time it, until after we get to Phase 1 report. Let's see what we've got there, because then I take a look at it and then let's remove it.
They may wanna have the drums removed, the one drum particularly they thought was leaking.
That was in the garage?
Yes, before that.
They may.
You notified with that, too, chief?
Only letter I've got is a request from the town to find out if a handy representative around tanks, or any tanks at all. This is the first I'm hearing of this.
Oh, you should have been copied by the DEP. At the bottom of the letter on August 2nd, it was, the fire chief was copied. It said, you said you were gonna be copied.
Well, we notified you now.
Yes. Aren't you glad you stayed?
Well, these trust me things.
Thank you.
No, what it is, is you're familiar with the property up there?
Yes.
That, that first building you come to on the left? When you're facing the building on its left, we assume there's an underground storage tank there because there's a vent pipe that's coming out through the ground. And that was found when we did a sciphism in August, I think, or somewhere in there, July, something like that. And the, who was it that came up there? The DEP came up there with us. And there was a 55-gallon drum that may have stuff in it, inside the building, that probably, well, that does need to be removed. So those are the, those are the two items that we're talking about right now.
I'll follow up with the DEP, if there's anything I need to know.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, with that, are there any additions to our, our list? Moving on, remarks to the select board. Does anyone have anything they would like to, to say? Mr. Boyle?
It bothers me greatly to say this.
Go ahead.
But the property on Daly Avenue, 33 Daly Avenue to be exact, formerly known as Brown Oil and Maribido or whatever it was, is now vacated. And a gentleman has applied for a special permit, he told it was necessary for a special permit, to open, open an automotive repair business there. Pretty extensive one, using five bays. A lot of the neighbors have contacted me, and people have been there for years, lived on Daly Avenue, and they're concerned about two things. The first one is minor. According to a notice in Eagle, the property owner owed $6,000 in taxes to the town of Dalton. Second-
The former property owner.
The current property owner.
Current property owner.
Which is-
Yes.
Yeah, whatever, the Schwiglers?
Okay, okay.
And the second concern is, this is a major concern, what exactly is gonna happen to the remediation if, if it needs to be remediated because those, there's two, I don't know, 10,000 gallon tanks right in front of where the car bay's are, right? So I told them about two things, you should go to the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, which is next Tuesday, the 4th. And then I started thinking, Jesus, this is over the weekend, this all happened. This should be on the agenda for tonight. And the reason it should be on the agenda for tonight is because of this letter we got from them telling us it was gonna be and asking for our input. Now, I realize that it's holiday season and, you know, people been busy in and out, but we didn't respond to this and we didn't take it up tonight. So where are we now?
Well, you know what we can do? We can have a early meeting on the 3rd at Nessicus, like we did last-
I knew you were gonna say that, Ed.
Well, that's the only out we have right now.
I agree. I agree. But there are some, we may wanna, you know, if it was just, you know, routine, but I don't think this is a routine property down there. Now, if I could say this about the tax issue. I saw that notice in the paper, and in the tax taking, the preliminary, that he owed $6,000. So I took the latitude of going into the collector's office this afternoon and asking her. She said he paid up a lot of it. But still owes something. Now, we have some sort of a town bylaw that no licenses will be issued if the property owner owes back taxes. Is that correct, Ken?
That's true.
Okay. That's just one issue. Now, I'm glad you're here, Jerry. Do we know anything at all about those tanks down there?
I do, and I've already addressed it with the zoning board, the owner of the property, and the proposed, well, Mr. Patel.
Okay.
All I did was send a letter. The EP's already been working on actions on that, and I just notified him to just be aware of that.
But yes.
If I could interrupt just for a moment, John. We're getting into this area of discussion-
Yes.
-that we really shouldn't because the property owner isn't here, and it's not on the agenda. I wish we could, but we can't. We probably should save this, save this for the 3rd. I'll figure out what time we should have our meeting, it'll probably be something like 6:00 PM at Nessicus. And we can invite those people of interest to that meeting to, you know, make sure that they can voice their opinion and respond, respond to these, whatever we're talking about. But that's about all we can do right now, so.
6:00 or 6:30? Last time we did it, it was 6:30.
Well, I don't know how involved this is gonna be.
Yeah?
You know, I'll, I'll let everyone know if it's gonna be 6:00 or 6:30. I would like to have it at 6:30. We'll see. We'll see.
Whatever you think. I think that's the only way we can handle this, but we may very well wanna convey our opinion to the board of, zoning board of appeals for Tuesday night.
Yes. Okay. Okay. I'll take care of that.
Thanks.
Do you need that? You've got it, right, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from board members? Okay, thank you. Which brings us to announcements. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which goes into effect on November 15th and will be in effect until April 15th, 2019. I hold office hours by appointment. For further information, please call 413-684-6111, extension 11, or you can call my home number, 413-684-2526. State Representative Paul Merk holds office hours at Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the 3rd Tuesday of each month. On the 3rd Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Dalton Town Hall, and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. We are having a special town meeting, December 3rd, 2018, 7:00 PM, at the Nessicus Regional Middle School. I encourage everyone to attend. And as you've just heard, we will be having a select board meeting prior to that, prior to that special town meeting. And just to give people a heads up, we will make a decision on December 10th whether we're gonna have a meeting on December 24th, which right now, I don't think we're going to. But we'll make a formal, we'll make a formal decision on that on the 10th, okay? Because I don't have it on the agenda tonight.
I just wanted to know if I can be excused early, and I have the toys to deliver that anyway?
Say that again, if you could be-
I wanna be excused early because I have toys to deliver that.
All right, I know. We probably will not, as I said, we probably will not hold a meeting, but we haven't been able to discuss that yet, which we will discuss it on the 10th, which will be on the agenda as for meeting schedule.
What can we have on the 25th?
You may, okay. But you, never mind, I'm not gonna go there. So at any rate, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, no, you can't have a motion to adjourn, we have to go to executive session. Okay. I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Okay, I move we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in that return open session.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, though. Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels? Yes.